Our next item is open forum. Members of the public are invited to address the school committee during open forum. Members wishing to speak, please raise your hand and you will be recognized. Each speaker will have five minutes with an additional five minutes if needed, after all other members of the community who wish to speak have spoken. Committee members will be able to respond if they choose. After all, public comments are completed, this open forum will be on agenda items only. So is anybody who wishes to address the school committee at this time? Come on up. I just state your name, please.
Good evening, I'm Amy Rodriguez from Narragansett. I'm here to speak, just standing in proxy for Robert Carradell. So Title IX adopted in 1972 consists of 37 words. No person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. As a result of Title IX, any school that receives any federal money from the elementary to university level, in short, nearly all schools, must provide fair and equal treatment of the sexes in all areas, including athletics. Title IX was written primarily to protect women from discrimination based on sex, not men identifying as women. Not only does the Biden administration's illegal rewrite and hijacking of Title IX not prevent discrimination on the basis of sex, it mandates it. What's more, the executive branch does not have the authority to make a law. Only Congress does. RIDE knows this, yet still threatens school districts in Rhode Island if they dare not comply. The school committee's proposed revision to this policy will keep boys out of girls bathrooms and locker rooms, and the possibility of boys competing against girls athletically, outlaw boys rooming with girls on overnight field trips, and compelled speech of mandatory pronoun use, and ensure that parents are informed if their child presents to socially transition in school. All of these proposed changes make sense for all kids and to all families, as these children do not belong to the state or the school. Until they turn 18, they are the sole responsibility of their parents. I am sympathetic to those who are confused with their sexual identity and want them to get the mental health counseling they need outside of school. However, to be clear, no matter how much a boy wants to be a girl, dresses like a girl, thinks he's a girl, or acts like a girl, he will never be a girl, never. Biden's policy rewrite, as well as RIDE's adherence to it, are blatant attempts to take advantage of a vulnerable population and destroy the family unit. This district and all other districts must not comply. Say no. Tell this administration in RIDE to shove it. That we know what's best for our town and our kids. This policy revision will make certain that all of Westerly's kids get the safety and privacy that they all need and deserve. Next stop, every school district in Rhode Island. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the school committee at this time? Please come up and just state your name.
Thank you, members of the committee. My name is Ryan Fontaine. I am here representing Thundermist Health Center as its trans health, education, and policy specialist. For those of you who may not be familiar, Thundermist is a federally qualified community health center with locations in Windsocket, West Warwick, and Wakefield. Thundermist presently serves over 62,000 patients. Statistically, that's one in 18 Rhode Islanders with patients who come from every zip code in our state. In 2015, Thundermist became the first in Rhode Island to establish a dedicated program for transgender health, which is the largest in the state today, serving over 2,100 patients. We're here this evening to express concern over the draft of the transgender student policy that is being considered. It is understandable why many people may read through the draft and conclude it is a sound policy in the best interests of transgender, non-binary, and gender diverse students in the town of Westerly. Shrouded in the language, though, that seems to be positive on the surface is the draft's true intent of forcibly outing transgender students without regard for their well-being, or their rights in the case of students aged 18 and over, and preventing Westerly school districts from taking, or preventing Westerly schools from taking steps to best support transgender students. Just as significant as what is written in the draft is what is left out of the draft. This draft is missing statements that affirm transgender students' access to bathrooms, locker rooms, and other facilities consistent with their gender. While addressing athletics, the draft leaves out an affirmative statement that students will be allowed to participate in interscholastic sports consistent with their gender in alignment with the Rhode Island Interscholastic League rules. This draft is missing an overall affirmative statement that students would be allowed to participate in school activities consistent with their gender. Now, I could continue, but there's only so much time that I'm willing to take up tonight. The draft appears to be based on the existing protocol that has been in place in Westerly for many years. The existing protocol addresses in detail all points required and regulations set out by the Rhode Island Department of Education, and the existing protocol ensures that transgender students have the ability to participate in school life on equal terms as their peers. The proposed draft is neither, while creating areas of conflict for Westerly schools. Rather than spending more valuable time working over another draft, there seems to be a straightforward and simple solution available, and that is to adopt the existing protocol as district policy.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the school committee? Yep, just please come up and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Rose Vandover. I live at Top Street, Westerly, Rhode Island. I don't have anything written down, and I'm not educated in all the aspects of this, but I do know this. Boys don't belong in girls locker rooms, bathrooms, or any of the above. You're a boy, you're a boy. And the question I have to ask the council is this. When some young girl gets raped in the bathroom or the locker room because you all put this RIDE policy in place, are you going to be able to sleep at night? Because I don't think I could, to be honest with you. I think it's shameful, and I think it is, I can't even believe that I'm standing here having to say these things to you. I mean, don't you have children? Do you want some boy in a bathroom with your daughter? Doesn't make any sense to me, because I sure as all heck wouldn't. I don't care. If you have a mental illness, that's what we need to be looking at, is not allowing these boys into the girls bathrooms. But what is the mental problem? What happened here? And I can't help but think that it's from the indoctrination, starting way back when, and it's happening now, where all these children are being indoctrinated to think that this is okay, and this is the norm. Well, it is not. It is not the norm, and it is not right. We are confusing our children, and when you confuse them, you can control them. And that's what this is all about. I can't help but think for one minute, and I'm not saying all of you here are doing this, but this is wrong, and you know it's wrong. Like I said, I can't even believe we're sitting here having this discussion, because you're going to lose more kids out of your school because parents aren't going to put up with it. They're gonna, they're gonna, they may not say anything. They may not come up here and say anything, because they're worried that their child is going to pay the price from some teacher or some other kid in school harassing them, because they're not for this. But you are losing students. We should be worried about our grade point average, which is in the toilet. It's in the toilet. We should be ashamed of ourselves. And here we are worried about some dude being in some girl's bathroom? Come on. Please, for the love of God, open your eyes. This is wrong, and you know it's wrong. Vote no, absolutely not. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the committee at this time? Just come up, please state your name, and then.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Roy. I'm a member of Moms for Liberty, and I believe that protecting our children is the utmost importance. There is confusion within this generation regarding whether they have, you know, girl or boy inside them or outside of them. And I think that the place to discuss this is at home with the parents. I believe that the parents are the primary caregivers of the children, although they do spend a lot of time in school. So I do give credit to the teachers and the people who do care for them while they are in school. But I do not believe that it is their place to decide and to keep things from the parents. And that is what Moms for Liberty stands for. We stand for the protection of children and the protection of parental rights in education. This is not a fight. This is not a battle. This is not, you know, he said, she said, or vice versa. This is not about someone expressing themselves. This is about getting an education. This is preparing for extended education, college, the future. Our children are our future. And if we confuse them, as the last speaker had just said, then what are we left with? We are left with dysfunction. We are left with children who do not understand who they are. We are left with children who may have regrets, and then they can't go backwards. And that further disrupts our human race and keeps us from evolution. If we make our children sterile, if we follow these transgender policies, it's only going to get worse. And the rift between the human race and people in general is just going to become a crevice instead of just a rift. I do hope that you take into consideration the fact that boys should not be in girls' sports. They shouldn't be in locker rooms. They should have separate places. And if you feel like you're a girl, I don't know what to tell you. You know, you should use the boys' bathroom if you have a penis. I'm sorry. And vice versa. I hope that you guys will consider this. This is not my school district, but I am a part of Washington County Moms for Liberty, so I do stand up here in consideration for the children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Diane Goldsmith, 73 Shore Road, Westerly, Rhode Island. I'm not exactly, I have a whole written thing here, but I'm not exactly sure where to start. I think the first thing I have to say is, no matter what people say, transgender people exist. They exist in reality. They are who they are. They are not mentally ill. They are not part of the DSM-3, 57, whichever number we're up to now. They are. They are our students. They are parents. They are people in our community, and they are not here. And the question is, why are they not here? Why are they not standing up? Because it's scary to do that. It is scary to hear people tell you that who you are is not real, that you're sick, that you're mentally ill. I'm not trans, but I'm a lesbian, and trust me, I have heard every single one of these things said to me in my lifetime. Every one of them. It's fear, and it's hatred, and it's awful. And if you truly, truly care about students, truly care about students, and truly care about what you say about creating a safe environment for all students, then you take seriously the fact that all students, includes gender diverse students, gay and lesbian students, transgender students, students who are questioning, students who are trying to figure out who they are. And yes, every one of those people, students, will be, could be helped with supportive and loving families. But I tell you, if one of these people was my mother, would I come out to them? Not in a single minute. Because what I am hearing is hatred, hatred, hatred for who I am. One of the things.
Please don't, no, excuse me. Point of order. Excuse me. Do not interrupt the speaker at the podium. Thank you.
One of the things that is very different about being LGBTQ is that we grow up in families that are not like us. If you're Italian, you grew up in Italian family, or Italian Portuguese, or whatever. You grew up with the same culture. You grew up with people that love their culture. That's a generality, I know that, if you're adopted, and there's some other exceptions. But you have people around you who bring you up with a feeling of security and safety for the culture that you're in. If you're LGBTQ, you do not have that. You grew up with parents, however loving, who do not understand really and truly what you're going through, because they did not. You grow up not knowing how your parents are going to accept you. And even if you have the most loving, caring parents, coming out to them is one of the most frightening things you can do. I know, I've done it, and I've talked to many kids. If you do not understand this, you do not understand the number of transgender kids that try to kill themselves and succeed, the number of transgender kids that are thrown out of their homes and are homeless, the number of transgender kids that face violence in their families. To have a policy that forcibly outs children without their consent, you are creating an absolutely unsafe school for those students. Absolutely. The policy that is proposed removes affirmative statements. It removes the ability of, I assume, I don't actually know in this policy who's supposed to call the parent and out the child, nor does the policy say whether the child is even told ahead of time, nor does the policy take into account possibly divorced parents with different viewpoints, nor does it take into the account that the child might be out to one parent and not the other. Many, many contingencies. Nor does it tell you who's going to pick up the phone, what sort of training that person is going to have, how they're going to deal with the child. None of that is explained in this policy. I find it absolutely fascinating that not once in this conversation do we talk about girls transitioning to boys. It's always about boys transitioning to girls. And the whole issue of sports and protecting women in sports is what kept women from running marathons. It kept women from, when I had to play basketball with only three dribbles, it kept women from Little League. We are not protecting girls by this, by a policy that is proposed here. We are not. And if you care about safety, and if you care about.
Sorry, Diane, I have to stop you, but you can come back up afterwards if you want. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the school committee at this time? Okay, seeing none. Diane, actually, Ms. Goldsmith, if you wanted a few more minutes, you can have it. You can have a few more minutes. If nobody else wants to address it, you can have your second. Oh, okay, then, come on up. Diane, you know, you have to, I'm sorry, that's a procedure. You'll have to wait till she's done.
My children grew up in this town.
I'm sorry, can you just state your name for the.
My name's Laura Carnahan. I live at Four Meadow Ridge Road, Westerly. I hadn't planned on speaking, so if I'm not well informed, I apologize. I believe that this policy was most recently brought up and hasn't actually been assessed with research and documentation to support this new policy. Am I correct on that? Is there, could someone answer me?
We can have discourse back and forth.
Okay, all right, then. What I do want to say is, I have worked with transgender people. I have worked with people transitioning over the 30 years that I worked for American Airlines. In none of those situations did I ever find that someone had a mental illness problem. They had a problem feeling they were born in the wrong body. That's not something that just happened to this generation. That's something that's been around since the beginning of time. If you go into history, if you go into Turkish history, Middle Eastern history, Asian history, trans people existed. This isn't some other school operates. For people who are questioning their identity, I personally, as a taxpayer and a mother in this town, want lots of research and lots of dialogue before anything is changed from what Rhode Island Department of Education states. Everyone has their right to an opinion, but if the Rhode Island Department of Education has set forth a certain guideline, and you want to go against it, I want lots of research. I want lots of research to back up, and I want the research current. I don't.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the committee? Okay, seeing none. Diane, if you want, five more minutes, you can have it.
10-year-old girls, there was no girls' soccer league, so they fought to play in the boys' soccer league. They were undefeated and won the championship. So let's not hear about the fact, but what they found was trans women are not the same as biological men. So I think there's a lot more research that we need, a lot more study. And to change a policy again, not based on research, and not based on talking to people who are affected by this policy, the actual students who are affected, I think is a mistake. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, are there any committee members who wish to respond at this time?
So thank you to our speakers, and I'm going to save most of my comments for when it comes up on our agenda. But I do just want to make sure that we say to any of our students and families who are transitioning, are considering this, or using this policy to, I hope that you take care of yourselves and do what you need to do to feel safe. And if this conversation is tough to listen to, that you give yourself grace, because some of the things that have been said can be extremely hurtful. And if you're not in a good space to take in this conversation, I hope you do what you need to do to feel safe.
Well said, thank you, Ms. Dunn. Anybody else who wishes to respond at this time? Okay, oh, Ms. Michael.
I just want to thank everyone for coming up to the podium. I think it's important that everybody realizes that this committee already voted to, unanimously voted to work on writing our own policy. This attachment to the agenda is a very rough draft. It was to initiate conversation on how we want to move forward with it. I don't agree with everybody that came up to the podium, but we're going to have conversations about this, and I appreciate all of your input.
Thank you. Our next item is, our whole business is transgender protocol. Ms. Michael, do you want to kick this off?
I had just asked for this to be on so that we continue the conversation. I, there's a very rough draft policy. I don't think anybody's looking to approve, you know, just approve this as a draft and move forward to a second reading of it. I think that we can take, I don't know, I mean, I think that we talk about so much stuff at these meetings that has nothing to do with educating our kids, that it's getting, we just, I think we need more time to talk about it. And I think we need to, if everyone wants to read it, put some input into it. I mean, I don't really know. Dr. Grosso emailed us with a few things on it. I just didn't think that the, I personally just do not agree with the RIDE policy. Everybody up here voted to write our own, so I thought that was where we wanted to go with it. And I think we should, everybody should take a look at that, and then we can have it on the next agenda with some edits, adjustments, things that everybody feels is important.
Thank you. Mr. Jankarelli?
So I was at a conference today, it was about Title IX. So there are new, there's new law, there's new legislation coming out effective August 1st of this year. And obviously, law supersedes any policy. So I think what we need to do is really dive into this, into the law, and really look at, because there's, in Title IX, it talks about transgender policy. It talks about transgender, it talks about LGBTQ students. I mean, there's a lot in there that are somewhat changing. So I think we need to really have an understanding of what that new law is saying, because it's, before we, I think, before we even dive into this. So my thinking is, I think we table it right now until we have an understanding of the new law before we move forward.
One second, can you just explain about that, about the new law?
Yeah.
At the conference.
Yeah, so I wrote some notes. So, um, let me see. So there are some changes from the previous legislation. A part of the changes include, I'll just list a few of the things that are changing. They're really defining a lot of specific words within the law, because I think in the previous law, there were words in there, and there weren't really meanings to those words. So there's going to be more defined, specific, you know, definitions of some of these words. They talked about doing, you know, having live hearings. They talked about doing, when there is a harassment or some sort of case, affirming, you know, offering support, students from sex discrimination. They talked about how it prohibits discrimination against LGBTQ students and employees based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and, I can't read my writing here. So that's pretty much the gist of some of the changes. There's more, too. There's this high school with pregnancy. There is a lot in this new law that's out.
And when's that coming?
It's effective August 1st. I believe it's already out. Dr. Grosso, is it out?
August 1st.
It is out, but it comes effective August 1st.
Ms. Dunn, I saw you had your hand up, and then Ms. Bowley. Thank you.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that I think need to happen with this. Something that I really appreciated was, I think, the last time we did, we talked about this, was there was the idea of possibly workshopping this. And I think, given what Mr. Jankarelli just said, and then also what we saw here, I think what worries me is to keep putting this on the agenda without a path forward, is it's baiting people on both sides of the issues to get really emotional. It becomes really high stakes. And I fear that it's putting a lot of fear into people who are directly affected by whatever protocol or policy we have in place. So I think if we workshop this, and in that workshop, we look at whatever legal aspect comes in, we get guidance from RIDE, and then I think we also need to invite into the room counselors, social workers, the people who are directly having these conversations with students and families, because as Diane Goldsmith stated, what does it actually look like in practice when somebody has to pick up the phone and call home and say, this is what's going on with your child. We want to have a discussion with you. I don't think we have the answers to those questions yet. So if we can sit in a room and actually talk through what we have in place, what's being proposed, and get answers to those questions, and hear from the people who have to do this job, I think we can make an educated decision on what next steps are. And if it's done in a workshop, and people come prepared with things they might have questions about, things that they want to add in, things that maybe they feel don't fit into what policy we want to put in place for our students, that's when we can move this forward, and it doesn't just become an emotional thing. It becomes an actual practical, a practical step for us. What I fear the most is, as I said earlier, is that if we have students who are either using this protocol, or maybe they're trying to navigate what that next step is, I don't want to put any student or family in a position where they feel like they are unsafe in our school because the goal is to out them or change their perspective on what their next step might be. So I'm all for us having productive dialogue, and this is a part of us being here, but we need to have the right people in the room to guide us to make a good decision so we don't end up putting a child in harm's way or doing something that will put us in a legal situation that we can't get out of.
So we did get this draft yesterday, and I'll be honest, I have not read the whole thing, because I'm the type that needs to look at what we have in place. I would put this side by side with the protocol, and I would really love to have like a red line version of the new policy, the proposed policy, so that it shows us exactly what is different from the protocol that's in place and to what this is. So I haven't had the time to, in one day, go through that. I know some other, and Joe, this is different now that you've said that, that something's taking place August 1st, but I do know that some other communities have developed their own policy. So I want to look, take a look myself to see what those policies are. I will do that. And like, we have to make sure that, I was glad also, Joe, that you said, talked about wording, definitions and wording, and what exactly does this mean? And, you know, people come and talk about parent rights, but what if you don't have parents? What if, what if you're, you know, you have a guardian, you don't have a parent? I just want to be very careful, because the reason we're all elected up here is to take care of our kids, all of our kids. And to Leslie's point, we, I don't think any of us have the perspective that we would need to go in and blindly just write this policy. So I'm looking forward to the workshop, as Leslie said.
Any other input? Mr., sorry, over, then Ms. Michael. It's getting late, I'm sorry.
No, I thought, yes, that we'd be doing a more in-depth workshop. I mean, it's an important policy. We all have points of view and as we've heard, people in the public have points of view. Now that Joe's brought up there, law changes, we should look at that. We may want to have more than one workshop on it as well. But, you know, the one thing I do want to make clear, we're not changing or looking at changes of the policy because we believe transgender, there's something wrong with being transgender, that there's some sort of mental illness or that they, we have to protect them, be protected from them. These are to look at the situations that benefit both, anybody who has feelings on this issue, you know, on sports policy, bathroom policy, whatever. But it's not, we shouldn't be approaching for it and people shouldn't be expecting that we're going to make it an issue that we're doing this to protect, to protect people from other people.
I just wanted to say, I'm for, would agree to doing the workshop. I just can't believe that three changes, whether the wording was a little bit off. I mean, I think that's why I put it in front of everybody to have something to discuss. My three main goals were to keep gender-specific restrooms and have accommodations for any other student who does not want to use one of those bathrooms. And we have that in the high school. So maybe we do talk to the people who are actually implementing these processes that aren't following the RIDE protocol currently and find out what they're doing and do it that way. My second point was that for locker rooms and for overnight field trips, because the way the protocol from RIDE reads, anybody can pick any place they want to stay. And that's not, in my opinion, what I'm comfortable with. The third point was, and I'm not, I look at it differently than calling it outing kids. I look at it as involving the parents and having the schoolwork as the bridge to communication between the child and the parent or the guardian or the caregivers, whatever the term is that we want to use. The point is, parents should not be left out of this conversation. And generally speaking, the people in the schools that are one-on-one with students are not qualified anymore than a parent might be other than the fact that they're that child's parent to make these decisions with their kid. So I don't think that we should be allowing the schools to be hiding information about a child from their parents and if the child is a minor. And I know people disagree with my terminology. I disagree with your terminology. So there are going to be things that we have to disagree on. And if I wanted to, I mean, so I think a workshop is a good idea, but I can't believe we're at this stage where people are throwing a fit over parents being involved in decisions regarding their child's health, well-being, identity. It's bizarre to me that we have to even be having this conversation. But I'm willing to do it.
Any other? Okay, Ms. Dunn.
So to Ms. Michael's point, I think sometimes we make the assumption that every kid is going home to a place of love. That every kid, the teacher can pick up the phone and say, oh, hey, this is what's happening at school today. And come on in and let's talk about what's going to be some next steps, how you feel, how your family feels. And that's not the case. So when we talk about having a workshop, it's not to say, don't talk to the parents, don't talk to the caregivers. It's to say, how does this look in practice? If a kid really comes forward and says, under no circumstance can I call home and say this, we have to understand what that conversation looks like because I believe in the protocol that existed. It did say there's an intention of getting to a point where the student can have that conversation. And it was broken out based off of age and different pieces. I think, I don't even have a good grasp on what does that actually sound like? What are the social workers saying? What are they going to, you know, talk to the child about possibly having to have that conversation? And if there truly is some type of safety threat, how are they identifying that threat to say, okay, well, we need to escalate this to a point of, does there need to be an intervention here to do this? So it's not about hiding anything. It's about making sure that we're not putting a child in an even more dangerous situation when they're trying to navigate something. And I think the goal is obviously to get them to a place where they can have that conversation. But it's giving them the tools and then making sure we have the right support in place to say, we want to be a part of this discussion to get everybody on the same page. So I think that's why it's important that we look at this as something we need to workshop over. It's, I don't think it's a one and done. We can't just sit in a room one time and say it because I feel like there are a lot of questions. And as I said, if we do this the right way, it's a pat on the back for everybody and we've done it the right way. But if we do this the wrong way, it is going to be wrong and it is going to be a stand on this committee. And the sad, the sad reality is, it could lead to somebody being hurt by it. And I just think we have to cross all of our Ts, dot all of our Is, put the right people in the room and talk through this to make sure.
I think Ms. Dunn always says it so eloquently. She does such a great job of saying things. I just, any more knowledge that we can get on this, to have the right people in the room. And I will say that I think some of the right people to have in the room are the parents as well. We need to have people on both sides of the aisle on this and see what we can come up with that's going to really hopefully protect all students. And that's, that's all everybody wants. It's just, we can never kind of agree on how to get there. So.